This time I'd like to call the Monday, March 20th, 2023 City of Vandelia Council Meeting to Order. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion to amend this evening's agenda to add Resolution 23-R-25, a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the fact-finder's recommendations relating to the police officers, public safety specialists, and clerk typus, and also Resolution Number 23-R-26, a resolution authorizing the City of Vandelia to enter into a revenue-sharing agreement with the City of Dayton.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follic and a second by Councilman Blakesley to amend our agenda to add Resolution 23-R-25 and 23-R-26. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right. All right, council, you've had an opportunity to review the study session minutes of February 20th and the council meeting minutes of February 20th. Are there any comments or questions on those? Being none, they stand approved. That brings us to communications, petitions, and awards. And we're going to go a little out of order here tonight. We're going to start with Item D, which is the Veterans Banner Program. Mr. Wendt.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I will turn it over to Councilmember Follic here in a moment, but first, this banner, or this program that's up, was actually featured on a local news station. We've got a video from that that I would like to show. And so Darren's going to work that magic in the back.
They're launching a project to recognize their veterans.
Two News reporter Kelly King shows us how they are joining forces to honor our service members and their commitment.
Vandelia and Butler Township are honoring those who've served and sacrificed. Banners will soon line Dixie Drive, also known as Veterans Parkway. On a busy stretch of Dixie Drive, a project to recognize the faces who fought for our freedom.
The program is not unique to Vandelia Butler Township. Other communities have done this the same.
Vandelia and Butler Township are partnering together, joining other surrounding communities, paying tribute to our heroes. Veterans banners, like these, will hang from light posts on Dixie, also designated as Veterans Parkway. City Councilmember Cory Follic is taking the lead.
Both my grandfathers are veterans. They're both have passed away, but they're both veterans of the armed forces, so those two will be recognized as well as part of the program.
Applications for the Veteran Banner Program are currently being accepted. Banners are $100 each, and you can apply through this QR code or through the Vandelia Butler Chamber of Commerce website. The banners will stay up from Memorial Day through Veterans Day, and then will be given to the family after a two-year cycle. For those who died fighting, they will be given a Gold Star designation.
Butler High School, for years, has had Memorial Hall, which is dedicated to 16 Butler alumni who've made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of action. So we felt strongly that we wanted to include them in the inaugural program.
From just south of Butler High School, stretching to Stop Eight Road, there's enough room for 130 banners. For two communities where patriotism runs deep, this project is a little recognition for those who gave a lot.
We have such a strong group of veterans here in our community. We have three dedicated service organizations in the community, and I just thought it was time that we had a program unique to Vandelia.
Applications for the first round of installations are being accepted until noon April 24th. Reporting in Vandelia, Kelly King, Two News.
Do more with River Valley Credit Union.
All right, thank you. And thank you to Ms. King, who is a Vandelia resident and Butler alumni, who jumped on the story to do the, who jumped on the opportunity to do the story for us. So we're thankful for her. Will help us get the word out on the program. So I don't want to repeat too much of what was already covered in the little snippet there, but, you know, we decided to do this program, and we want to emphasize we're partnering with Butler Township and the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber is, has agreed to administer the program for the community, so we thank them for taking the lead on that. But the program is for veterans or family members. They can purchase a banner, like the video said, and they'll be along Dixie Drive here in May, and they will remain up all summer and into the fall until after Veterans Day each year. And then they'll be taken down, put into storage for the winter months, and then put back up the following spring. The eligibility is pretty straightforward. It's just anyone who resides or has resided in Vandelia or Butler Township, attended or graduated from Vandelia Butler High School, or are an immediate family member, which is defined in the handout, of a current Vandelia or Butler Township resident. Service in any of the six branches of the military qualify, as well as the Reserve and National Guard. And the only other stipulation is that the veteran be honorably discharged, which proof is required with a DD-214 or the equivalent at the time of application. They mentioned the price is $100, and that's for a unique banner for the veteran, double-sided. Some communities are the veteran on each side, but this will have the veteran on both sides. And then again, after the two-year display period, the banner will be returned to the applicant's family. I think unique to our program is the concept of a dual-side banner, which we thought was a pretty impressive look, once it's going to be up and down Dixie Drive or Veterans Parkway there. The majority of the banners will be the Veterans Parkway designation there, but then, as the video mentioned, those veterans that may have been identified as being killed in action will have receive a Gold Star banner as a designation for their ultimate sacrifice to the, for our country. So we know that the 16 individuals who have already been inducted into Memorial Hall at Butler High School will be our first 16 Gold Star veterans that will be recognized. To apply, it's the VandeliaButlerChamber.org website, or the QR code that's available, both on the flyer. There was a stack of flyers on the table there, if anybody wants to grab those on their way out. It's also available off the city's website, the township's website, the Chamber's website, pushed out on social media from all three organizations as well. Applications will be taken continuously. However, we do have a deadline for the first installation, which is Monday, April 24th, at 12:00 noon. So anyone that wants to be in our initial installation for this summer needs to apply there by the 24th of April. And that's just to give us enough time to get the banners printed and out to our Public Works departments to get those up along Veterans Parkway. I can tell you that as of the end of last week, we had already sold 32 banners. So in just one week, the demand has been steady. And I know that, speaking with Chamber today, they took several calls and inquiries today. So I think we might meet our 130 maximum banners in no time. So if you're interested, do get your application in quickly. I just wanted to give a couple acknowledgements real quick, because this obviously is not a program that could be pulled off without a lot of people helping with it. First, both City Council for supporting the project, but then also Mr., the city manager, Mr. Wendt, for his help with the project. The Butler Township Board of Trustees and Township Administrator Erica Vogel, the Chamber of Commerce, first Bill Clark, who was the president, and then Nick Cavilakis, I believe is, I don't butcher his name too much there. But Nick came into the position about three, four weeks ago, and we met with him pretty quickly and kind of told him, hey, this has already been committed. How do you feel about this? And he has rolled up his sleeves and has hit the ground running. So Nick has done a great job with getting us where we are today. Also, real quick, thanks to city staff, IT Manager Darren Davy and Communications Manager Rich Hopkins, who helped get a lot of us over the starting line with some publicity and some technology issues. And also, a special thank you to a Vandelia resident, who's also a member of our planning commission, and that's Dave Arnold. Mr. Arnold has been very instrumental in the design and layout of the banners. He's volunteered his time. He puts a lot of detail into this and is helping us with all the layouts for all the banners and getting them to the printing company. So we thank him for his contributions to the program. And then, real quick, if you can indulge me for another minute or two, I just want to briefly, as the video mentioned, the 16 Gold Star veterans that are in Butler Memorial Hall, we sent letters to the family members, the known family members of survivors of those veterans. And there's not very many left here in the community, but we sent letters out to them, letting them know that their veteran would be featured as part of the program. And I received an email back from Frank Beeson, and I just wanted to read a couple parts of it, because it was very interesting. But Mr. Beeson and his wife Sandy still live in the community down in Butler Township. He just mentioned that he received a letter informing us that his uncle, Ambrose Beeson, will be honored with a Veterans Banner and Gold Star Banner, acknowledging his ultimate sacrifice during World War II. They plan to purchase a second banner acknowledging his father, Vincent Bus Beeson, who was a tech sergeant in the U.S. Army Air Corps for his service in World War II. To his knowledge, his dad, who was Vandelia's first vice mayor, serving with Mayor Ben Armstrong, was the first and possibly only Vandelia Butler resident who was a prisoner of war. Shortly after, his grandparents, Frank and Teresa Beeson of Rural Route 1 in Butler Township, had received word that one of their sons, Ambrose Beeson, had died while saving the lives of his fellow shipmates, they received word that another of their sons, Vincent, had been shot down, was missing in action, and was presumed dead. As it turned out, his dad was the only crew member of his B-24 team that survived the crash. He was taken prisoner and incarcerated more than six months while he was held in four different...
Stalags.
Stalags, until General George Patton's troops stormed the fourth camp before German troops could pull out of the POW encampment. His dad was emancipated and later returned to the States. And then he went on to explain that his other uncle, John Beeson, was credited with establishing the local Chamber of Commerce and served as their first president. So I thought it was just interesting that Mr. Beeson and his uncles and family, how much impact they had in the early years of Vandelia and Butler Township. Frank and Sandy apparently are the only two Beeson members, family members, that still reside in the community. So just wanted to share that as well. So, thank you. Hopefully, we get the involvement. And if anybody is interested, there are flyers there on the table you can grab on your way out. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Very noble cause, and appreciate Councilman Follic taking the lead on this, and everyone that he mentioned also played a role. We really appreciate it. Okay, we're going to get back on the agenda under Item A, the introduction and oath of office for Lieutenant Carter Schuman. Mr. Wendt.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Your Honor. I really apologize. I swear I had my voice this morning when we were doing our lieutenant onboarding with these three individuals. If it's okay, I will go ahead and introduce them individually, and then we'll go down and we'll do the oath of office. Let's go, Lieutenant Schuman, to go ahead and stand up. Now, Lieutenant Schuman is a resident of Butler Township. He's gotten associates from Sinclair College. He also is a Butler High grad. We double-checked his transcripts. We want to make sure. One of the other things, in addition to living in Butler Township, Lieutenant Schuman is engaged to Police Officer Kristen Thomas, who is also here. That's not why we're promoting him, but it doesn't hurt. She's a wonderful public servant for us, and we're so glad to have her on the team as well. There are a lot of really good things that I think you can say about the capacity for leadership that Lieutenant Schuman has. He's a loyal person. He's dedicated. He's driven. But he also exhibits a strong amount of empathy, which is exactly what we need in a first-line supervisor. So congratulations, Lieutenant. And we'll do your swear-in here in a second. Thank you. The next person, this person, wants to be a fire lieutenant more than I've ever seen anyone want a job, except for me wanting to be city manager of Vandelia, and that is Derek Cop. Lieutenant Cop, will you please stand up? Lieutenant Cop, he knows the policy goals inside and out. He knows his division and department goals. He knows the personalities of the people that he works with and very quickly identifies them. He lives in the City of Vandelia. He's worked at Harrison. He's worked at Butler Township. He picked up his associate's degree. And he's done everything to put himself in the right position to lead on his unit day. Lieutenant, I'm really proud of you. You've done a phenomenal job throughout this process, and I can't wait to swear you in. And that stripe looks good on your arm right there. Show everybody the stripe. Yeah. All right. Go ahead and sit down. Next, we've got Lieutenant Maya Mitchell. Maya has a ton of college classes, enough to have the equivalent of a master's degree. She lives in the City of Vandelia, has gone to Wright State University, and has, and has been on the department for some time. Maya definitely, definitely has the buy-in from her crew, and people look to her. I'll say it the way that you said it in your interview. They look to you for, like, the motherly advice and the guidance, and they also, I think they know that not only are they going to get the caring and the compassionate side, they're also, you're not going to shy away from the sour medicine and the tough love. And so I can appreciate that. At the end of the interview, we asked Maya Mitchell, you know, you've got 30 seconds to tell us why it is we should hire you, and she said, why wouldn't you? And you know what? It was, I mean, she nailed it. And so I'm really, really excited to see the way that you're going to perform in this new role. So congratulations. Have a seat. Lieutenant Schuman.
Where is the mic?
Is there a mic?
I, Carter Schuman, solemnly swear.
I, Carter Schuman, solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Ohio.
And of the state of Ohio.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of the City of Vandelia.
And ordinances of the City of Vandelia.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
A fire lieutenant.
A fire lieutenant.
Within the Division of Fire.
Within the Division of Fire.
Congratulations, Lieutenant.
I, Derek Cop, solemnly swear.
I, Derek Cop, solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Ohio.
And of the state of Ohio.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of the City of Vandelia.
And ordinances of the City of Vandelia.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
A fire lieutenant within the Division of Fire.
A fire lieutenant within the Division of Fire.
Congratulations, Lieutenant.
I, Maya Mitchell, solemnly affirm.
I, Maya Mitchell, solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Ohio.
And of the state of Ohio.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of the City of Vandelia.
And ordinances of the City of Vandelia.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
A fire lieutenant.
Fire lieutenant.
Within the Division of Fire.
Within the Division of Fire.
Congratulations, Lieutenant.
All right, let's, you just got to humor me, because this is such a wonderful day for a celebration. I was wondering if the lieutenants, if we could just get the three lieutenants to come stand right up here, and we'll snap a photo, maybe get the chiefs, the captains in this photo with you, just to commemorate this. You don't have to put the helmet on, but you can. You bring the helmet up here. Get it up here, so they know you're lieutenant. It's red. It looks good.
All right, I know we have a lot of fun city business here this evening, but if you would like to exit at this time, this might be the good opportunity, because everybody's just rushing to the door. One at a time.
He wanted to come up and do something. I don't know what it was, but he kept standing up and waiting for the other guys, and then they didn't do anything, so he sat back down.
That's too, that's actually good for a job, to say Chris.
Oh, okay. No, the little guy who walked out and said something. The one that was back in that corner. He, he was, that he wanted to come up, but the rest of his group wouldn't budge. Yeah. He took your job at State Street?
Yep.
We don't have a whole lot left here.
Most of the people.
Oh, my gosh. I thought they were here to see us.
We'll rejoin our normally scheduled council meeting in a few moments.
I was going to ask, what's the occupancy limit on this room?
All right, let's go ahead. Let's go ahead and continue. We have no public hearing, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And we have a person right now.
Hello, I'm Amber Avalotus Weaver.
Is that mic on? We want to be able to hear you.
Oh, okay. You guys just looked really confused. Amber Avalotus Weaver, 1031 Bailey Avenue, Vandelia. I'm coming today because residents have raised a concern, and I passed that up the level, and it's not getting addressed. So on February 2nd, that was the first time it became an issue. There were debris left over on the road at 4410 Little York. This is in front of Brad Wheeler's house. He lives right by the tunnel on Little York, and there's lots of accidents there. He was pretty upset. He'd already called in and left a call, but it didn't get taken care of. He'd said it was a continuing issue to him. And so I called Chief Althouse. He said that he contacted the contractor. I was trying to think of the word.
Towing company?
I'm sorry?
Towing company?
Yeah, towing company that is contracted to clean that up, and that it would be addressed. And so in good faith, we both agreed that it would be taken care of. On February 20th, a long list of residents made known online that this was becoming an ongoing issue in several different areas of the community, that there were accidents that were not getting cleaned up. And that's documented online. Then again, over the weekend, Brad, and Brad would be here to speak, but he works until 2:00 a.m. He's a concrete worker, and he can't come to council meetings. So he asked me to come up and talk. So I again contacted Chief Althouse, and he again contacted the towing company and asked them to fix it. So he spent all day over the weekend cleaning up, doing everything, making it look nice. It's already not a really great area to, for safety, and for him to even be out on the road trying to clean it up. And this morning, he sent me messages with pictures of glass, car parts, and debris, again, in front of his house. So this is now the third time since February 2nd that more than just him have noted that this contracted towing company is not doing their job in cleaning up after accidents are happening in the community. And it's not safe. It's annoying, and it causes us to have to, you know, veer around things. We shouldn't have to deal with glass in the road and debris. And especially since Chief Althouse has already reached out to the contracted company twice, this being the third time, I decided to come to you guys and see, what are you going to do?
Well, thanks for bringing that to our attention. I know that area has been problematic in the past. A lot of times, people are going east on Little York towards Uber Heights. They will stop right past that tunnel to turn left to go down towards Unibel. People fly through that tunnel. There's a lot of rear-end accidents. So I know exactly what you're talking about. I guess I'd also like to possibly ask our city manager if he can look into that also?
Yep, I'd be happy to. It's the first. I've become aware of that, as far as this stream of issues since the 2nd of February.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I think Kurt thought it was handled, and it's just, you know, continuing to be an issue. So, thanks.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? All right, we'll move on to the city manager's report, where I believe he has some information and action items.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Right behind Christmas and my anniversary with my wife, Youth Day in Government is the third-best day of the year, I think. That is tomorrow. That'll be in the basement of the Justice Center. So we're really excited that the Vandelia Optimists Club has organized that. I've got a whole packet of these that I'm eating, but thank you. Please enter through the dispatch doors. We've got Butler High students who are job shadowing us, and we're very excited for that. Um, we've got Butler High students who are job shadowing us, and we're very excited for that. I'm happy to report to you that, uh, Tri-City's Wastewater Authority General Manager Danny Knife and I have submitted, uh, requests for congressionally-directed spending, federal earmarks totaling $15 million, uh, through Senator Brown's office, and, and we'll be sharing those with our other representatives. Also, I'll just take this opportunity, um, we've been working a lot with our hotels in town. Um, there, of course, are three, the Knights Inn, Super Eight, Hawthorne Suites. Uh, Crime Prevention Officer Andy Weiner recently reported that a member of the management team at Creative Images thanked the city, thanked the Vandelia Police Division for its efforts to improve the behavior of the hotels, uh, and their guests. And during the conversation, Creative Images indicated a decrease in, uh, activity and negative interactions between Knights Inn guests and Creative Images employees, students, and faculty. And so, I'm thankful for their work and efforts, uh, to clean that up. That concludes my report, thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, we have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of the evening, that being Resolution 23-R-21. Mr. McDonald, by title only.
A resolution approving the updated Parks and Recreation Master Plan of the City of Vandelia.
Thank you, Mr. Wen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, the City of Vandelia partnered with Proz Consulting and OHM. This was over a year-long process. Uh, we had extensive, uh, community engagement throughout this, including a statistically valid survey, park-to-park meetings, um, input from the steering committee that was residents, uh, our, uh, some of our council members, council members, uh, Blakesley, Folick, uh, Mayor Herbst was also on the, uh, panel. Our Park and Rec Advisory Board delegates, people from the school, uh, et cetera, residents. And so, um, as we've gone through this, we've yielded in this 253-page document a set of recommendations. The request before you, uh, is that you adopt this, uh, document, this 2023 Park and Rec Master Plan as a policy document, meeting a guide, um, one that's used to advise the efforts of staff and the future budgetary appropriations. Um, that's not to say that we love or that we're going to do everything that's in it, but that we've taken that feedback, um, we've used evidence-based feedback to determine what should be the direction as we manage, um, a park system that has nearly $110 million in assets today. And so, um, that's what this is, and I would propose, um, that council, um, resolve to make this our policy document.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 23-R-21.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley, and a second by Councilman Folick to approve Resolution 23-R-21 as presented. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-22.
A resolution approving a financial contribution, excuse me, to the Historical Society of Vandelia Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Wen.
Your Honor, $15,000 is appropriated in council's budget for an annual donation to the Historical Society of Vandelia Butler for maintenance projects, and to include the cost of an annual business slash organization membership. It's necessary for council to take formal action to authorize this donation.
Thank you, can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 23-R-22 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fairst, and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Resolution 23-R-22 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-23.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of access control hardware and software and related doors and hardware requested by the IT Department for the 2023 Municipal Building Access Control Upgrade Project at a total price of $72,051.54.
Thank you, Mr. Wen, anything to add?
Thank you, Your Honor. The IT Department and Building Maintenance, uh, worked, uh, to identify deficiencies and security risks. We had a briefing on this at the last meeting. Um, I'm recommending an expenditure of $72,051.54. Um, that's for doorwork, that's for access control, and that we waive, uh, formal bidding. And the purpose for that is to have interoperability between the other areas, for example, um, the Justice Center, where it'll be on the same control system.
Thank you, can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve Resolution 23-R-23.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley, and a second by Councilman Folick to approve Resolution 23-R-23 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. And as noted earlier, we amended our agenda tonight to add Resolution 23-R-25. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the FactFinder's recommendations relating to the police officers, public safety specialists, and clerk typists.
Thank you, Mr. Wen.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Um, the City of Vandelia very much values its, uh, public safety personnel. Uh, this is a FactFinder recommendation that, uh, proposes, uh, in addition to the tentative agreements we've reached on operational and, uh, contract interpretation, mostly non-monetary, wage increases of 3%, 3%, 3% for each of the three years. Uh, I am recommending that we accept the FactFinder recommendation. Uh, I was informed earlier today that the union, um, the union rejected the FactFinder's recommendation, um, but this is still 3-3-3, and it's, it's very good, and we offer very competitive wages.
Thank you, can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 23-R-25 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick, and a second by Councilwoman Fairst to approve Resolution 23-R-25 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Next, we have Resolution 23-R-26.
A resolution authorizing the City of Vandelia to enter into a revenue-sharing agreement with the City of Dayton.
Thank you, Mr. Wen.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, this is a revenue-sharing agreement relating to the Kendall Electric development here in town. Um, it's a business-first practice. Um, this, uh, in order to enter into such an agreement was a condition of the Edge Funds, um, that are being distributed to Kendall Electric for their development here.
Thank you, have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number 23-R-26.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fairst, and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Resolution 23-R-26 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Uh, we have no ordinances in the first reading, however, we do have one ordinance in a second reading, that being Ordinance 23-05. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance amending the City of Vandelia Castle Hills Swimming Pool Fee Schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Wen.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. This was, uh, presented unextensively. The Parks and Rec Advisory Board, uh, advised that this be adopted, the updated fee schedule. Um, there are also limits to access on certain days that will only be for, uh, both residents of Vandelia or, uh, members at Castle Hills Pool. And so, we'll do a lot of work, including in my Vandelia magazine, on social media, um, and at our facilities to advertise the admission policy changes. Um, these are in direct response to complaints that we have received regarding some of the behavior of our patrons at Castle Hills Pool.
Thank you, can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move.
Excuse me, I forgot, since this is an ordinance in a second reading, uh, do we have to open up a public hearing? So if anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve, uh, Resolution 23-05 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice, Vice Mayor Lewis, and a second by Councilman Folick to approve Ordinance 23-05 in its second reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. We have two, uh, emergency ordinances, and the first one being, uh, 23-06. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance approving individual assessment amounts and directing the finance director or her designee to certify the amounts to the county auditor for collection and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Wen.
Your Honor, this emergency ordinance assesses properties for delinquent accounts relating to stormwater fees, trash collection, delinquents, sewer and water, and weed cutting.
Thank you. Since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to comment on this, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance 23-6 as emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers, and a second by Councilwoman Fairst to approve Ordinance 23-06 as an emergency. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Next, we have Ordinance 23-07.
An ordinance to revise appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Vandelia, Montgomery County, Ohio, during the calendar year ending December 31, 2023, and amending Ordinance 22-42 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Wen.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Uh, this is, I'm requesting approval of the supplemental ordinance. Um, this is our first of the year, and the items and the amounts are included in your packet.
Thank you. And since this is an emergency ordinance, we'll again open up a public hearing. So if anyone would like to comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Emergency Ordinance 23-07.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick, and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve Ordinance 23-07 as an emergency. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fairst.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbst.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. And next, we have reports from boards and commissions, and the first item is a conditional use for a truck repair facility, Industrial Park Drive. Mr. Wen.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The applicant, ISF Trucking, has requested a conditional use to permit a truck facility on property located at 1010 Industrial Park Drive. The proposed truck facility would conduct light maintenance of semi-trucks dispatching and parking. At its February 28th, 2023, meeting, the Planning Commission voted 4 to 1 to recommend approval with conditions.
Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, in addition to the six commissions, or six conditions, uh, of the Planning Commission recommendation, I would propose a seventh condition.
Excuse me, I believe there were seven from the Planning Commission?
No.
I've got it up on the screen, it, it carries over on the next page.
Okay, then, I stand corrected. Uh, in addition to the seven, uh, recommendations that the Planning Commission recommended, I would propose an eighth condition be added that states the facility shall not be constructed or operated in a manner that facilitates overnight stays for drivers, employees, or others, and that lodging in or about the premises or sleeping in trucks is prohibited.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick, and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis to approve the conditional use for the truck repair facility on Industrial Park Drive with the seven conditions noted by the Planning Commission, and also an eighth condition, um, as Councilman Folick has stated, essentially saying that there shall not be any overnight lodging or sleeping in the trucks. Are there any comments from council?
Yes, I, I've got a few. I want to go back to the, uh, statements and comments that we, uh, talked about in the workshop session, workshop session, uh, pertaining to this issue. I'm still confused by the number of trucks that will be going in and out of there every day. He stated that probably two or three. He also stated that, uh, probably 90, 95% of the 53 parking spaces for the trucks and the trailers would be full. If you, if you take those numbers, uh, and I'm assuming that a truck will go out at least once a week, because they don't make any money sitting there, uh, that means you're gonna have 50 going out and 50 coming back in. And on a five-day period, that would be 20, 20 trucks a day. And I'm also assuming that there will be many of these, that may take two runs per week, which would be, uh, some additional trucks. So you're talking anywhere from, uh, probably around 25 trucks per day going in and out of that facility. Is that, is that inaccurate, Stephen?
I might have misspoken. Uh, when I said 95% will be full, I meant, uh, those spots will be contracted for the carriers. That does not mean they will be, uh, in the parking lot at that time. And, uh, 50 trucks, it's very unpredictable, but usually, some of the trucks, they go on the road for a few weeks, like long haul, going all the way coast to coast, that takes them two weeks, and that, that's when they come back home. But e- even if they drive local, it's gonna be once a week at home. Uh, they don't drive, uh, they don't come home every day. These are, uh, semi-trucks for long hauls, so, and, uh...
So you, you don't think any of them would make two runs per week?
Uh, well, they do make two runs, they go Texas and back, that takes one week to go to Texas and come back. So if they get out on Monday, and they will be back on Friday to be parked back.
Are there any other comments from council?
I have one, and that is the, the traffic, as Councilmember Ayers is talking about. As I look at this, it's closer to an uncontrolled intersection as where is it possible to have all this traffic go to the traffic light? Is there a way to, to help channel that so that, you know, I think there's a concern for the neighborhood that there, you know, could be more accidents because of this increased traffic? Uh, is there something that you can help to guide them to the traffic light?
Yeah, we could definitely put up some signs and guide them towards the traffic light, but, uh, truck drivers are already professional drivers, and they would know the best route to take and what would be most, uh, safe for everyone.
I would agree with that comment for some, for most, uh, but there's every once in a while one that's gonna try and sneak out because they want to go the other way, so...
Yeah, and we will have those signs out for them.
You know, I almost added maybe another condition, but I don't know that we can control the traffic in, in that way because it's private property, but certainly, all efforts to make right turns to get to the traffic light. Now, I understand coming in is one thing, making a right turn into industrial, so, um, but try to move that traffic to the traffic light.
Definitely, they will be instructed, but, uh, once again, I mean, them being professional drivers, they should, uh, know that better.
The one concern I have is I, I do believe that, uh, this could be detrimental for the general welfare of the public here by adding, um, the truck traffic that's been brought up already, and I, I can't help but think that the numbers are probably going to be larger than what we're estimating. So I do have a, a concern with that, from that perspective.
The... And, uh, I'm not 100% sure. Councilmember Blakesley, um, i- if this helps to address your concern, you'll recall that, um, on a prior project, they put islands in the ingress egress. That's right. To limit to only make, um, that right turn motion. right turn motion, and that was done at this stage in the planning process and was added as a condition. And so I'm not sure if that applies here necessarily, but I just wanted to point out that council has done that before. Thank you for that reminder. Is that a possibility that we could add a ninth condition?
You'd have to...
It'd have to go back to the table.
Yeah, I mean, we have a pending motion right now that we'd have to take care of, but then if it was, either it gets voted on or withdrawn, and then you can add another provision.
Do you want to add that condition?
Yep.
Do you want to withdraw your motion?
I would draw my motion if Councilman Blakesley has another condition to add.
Okay. Procedurally, that was Councilman Folick has withdrawn his motion.
And Vice Mayor Lewis, we'd also need to withdraw. Right. And so now you can entertain a new motion.
Okay. Councilman Blakesley?
I'll make a motion then to approve with the seven conditions of the Planning Commission, including Councilman Folick's condition, and additional condition, number nine, to include a right out only, right in only, and right out only to the property. And however that can be accomplished.
So we're asking for a right turn in and out of the property.
My... Right. My concern with that is a right turn only into the property would require them to come in off of Industrial Park, which is what you're trying to avoid them from doing when they leave.
Right, and I guess thinking back to the other item that we did was a right in, right out, and you're right, a right out only, but however, you could still have a left and a right in. That work?
Your, your goal is that they track up here to Shoals Drive?
Correct.
To exit, is what he's trying to ask for.
To exit, exit the property, right turn.
And so you would, you would want that so that the egress had a concrete island in the egress that would limit exiting commercial trucks to only be able to turn right out of the property as a condition?
That's exactly what I'm saying. Thank you for helping me craft that.
Is that your job?
All right, is there any other comments? I have a motion on the table right now to approve the conditional use with the seven conditions provided by the Planning Commission, along with an eighth condition that Councilman Folick has brought to us as far as there not, shall not be any overnight lodging or sleeping in any of the vehicles. And then Councilman Blakesley has also added a ninth item that, if I'm going to get this correctly, that the egress be right turn only.
With a concrete island prohibiting it.
Okay. All right, any other comments? Call the roll.
Excuse me. Councilmember Ayers?
No.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Farst?
No.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
No, and the motion carries four to three. All right, that brings us to the City of Vandalia Bicycle Advisory Committee Meeting Minutes of December 12th. Well, I've got a copy of that. And the item number 15, the February 2023 bill listing in the amount of $3,845,933.3 with the February expenses over $50,000, and the February purchase card detail in the amount of $30,870.65. So are there any comments or questions? All right, we'll move on to council comments. We'll begin with Mr. McDonald.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wen?
None, Your Honor.
Councilwoman Woods?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Blakesley?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilman Folick?
Just two things real quick. One, again, to congratulate Lieutenant Schuman, Kopp, and Mitchell on their promotions within the fire division. And then also, I just wanted to recognize the perseverance and hard work of, and I hope I don't leave anybody out on this, but the city manager, our assistant city manager, and the law director, and maybe any other staff. Over the past month, two months, I think, we've realized two substantial real estate acquisitions for the city's benefit, and I think together, that's just about, or just over 85 acres with a value of about $2.5 million. And when I say two acquisitions, those should be highlighted that they're donations, so we're not using taxpayer money to obtain that acreage that we have potential uses for, without, with the exception of maybe some minor costs associated with securing titles and such, but largely the purchase of those properties were donated to us, so I think staff should be commended for that, for that work on those projects.
Thank you. Councilwoman Farst?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Councilman Ayers?
Nothing, Your Honor.
That brings us to Vice Mayor Lewis.
No, thank you, Your Honor.
The only comment I would like to make is, again, also recognizing the promotion